Good evening, the time is 5:32 PM. I would like to call toward it September 16, 2024 Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of the School Year 2024-2025. Thank you for everyone for being here. I am Mrs. Madeline Lasaya Frazier, Chair of the Committee and the District 8 Representative for Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone would please introduce themselves, starting with committee members, PGCPS administration staff, then the board office staff. I would really appreciate it. Thank you everyone for being here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jamal J. Jungle. I am the 44th PGCPS student member of the board. I'm representative of all students and I'm also the vice chair of the Academic Achievement Committee. It is all, it is so great to be here today and I'm just happy that we're ready to get the show on the road. We're about to do great things and yeah, I can't wait. I hope you guys enjoy this meeting.
Thank you, Jamal.
Good evening, I am Dr. Zepora Miller. I am the board member representing District 5 and welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm Judith White. I'm the Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, everyone. Trinell Bowman, Associate Superintendent for Special Education.
And good evening, I'm David Reese from our Office of Equity, Diversity and Belonging.
Good evening, my name is Rosa Lopez, Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
Thank you, everyone. Just as a reminder, this committee will be meeting virtually once a month on Mondays at 5:30 PM. Our topics are going to vary each month and will be posted in Board Docs prior to the meeting date. The public is also welcome to register prior to our meeting and present their testimony on agenda items, live, written, or through pre-recorded videos. For those who are not able to observe now, the meeting is now being recorded and will be available on the PGCPS YouTube channel on Board Docs for later viewing. I thank my colleagues, the administration and the board staff for your support this evening as we embark on our first meeting for the academic year. I am looking forward to a great start and to meet as a collective team to meet our goals. Thank you. Ms. Lopez, could you please move to 1.2 by doing roll call?
Mrs. Lasaya Frazier?
Present.
Mr. Jungle?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mrs. Adam Staffer? We have three in the affirmative, one absent. We have quorum.
Thank you. Three present and one absent. We have quorum. Thank you so much. Moving right along, we'll move on to 1.3, which is the adoption of the meeting agenda. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the September 16, 2024 meeting agenda. There being no objections, the meeting agenda is now adopted. Now we'll move forward and do 1.4 in our agenda, which is the approval of the committee meeting minutes. If there are no objections, the committee will then approve the May 13, 2024 meeting minutes as distributed. There being no objections, the meeting minutes are now approved. There are no registered public comments or speakers this evening. So we will move right along to the next agenda item, which is 3.0. This discussion item and presentation, which will be administered led by our administration. And now I yield to Dr. Judith White, our Chief Academic Officer, to introduce Agenda Item 3.1 Equity and Students with Disabilities. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening and to start back our academic achievement, starting the roll call for the year, the 2024-2025 school year. So last year, we had an opportunity to do this work a little differently, and that is picking three topics in the first three months of the year, looking at the theory behind the practice. Then we'll go into a data session and then starting in January, February and March, we'll pick up and look at those three practices in, those three practices and implementation, like what it looked like when it hit the field. So last year, we've had many parents come and share their thoughts around special education. And we've also done a lot of work around equity. So we thought it'd be fitting to come before you as our very first meeting, talking about the equity and the brilliance of our special education scholars. And so this work wasn't based solely on parents. It was a work that we actually started before then. However, we had an opportunity to do our equity series, which we do every summer. This summer, it was around special education and many of you actually joined. And today of all days was actually a systemic day where every educator and every office in our district had an opportunity to join in and engage around the brilliance of our scholars, our special education scholars, and what equity looks like, and to walk away thinking about how that impacts the culture of our buildings, how we engage with our students, how we think about instruction, how every core office in our system looks at the work, and how we plan it with intentionality. So this evening I have with us David Reese, the Director of Equity, and Trinell Bowman, our Associate Superintendent for Special Education. This is a topic that's near and dear for me. When I came into the system 31 years ago, I started as a special education teacher. And so I make decisions in mind throughout the curriculum of every diverse learner, really thinking through what it's like. And I always listen and even when our parents come with this lens on, you know, how do we get better? You know, I never take the stance that we're doing everything right, but it's always from a learning perspective and a learning stance of, aha, we're doing that, or mm, can't wait to see, you know, how we can make those adjustments and how we can get things right for students. And so I look forward to this. Once we they present tonight and share out, we'll come back to you in January and we'll talk about what we talked about tonight. We'll bring guests with us from our schools, as maybe even a couple of our students to say, how is what we said tonight going? From that, what will happen is in May, we will have an opportunity to come back together, you and us, and talk about what we learned and what our next steps will be as we go into the 25, 26 school year. So with that, I turn it over to my two colleagues, Dr. Reese and Mrs. Bowman.
Thank you much, Dr. White, for getting us started off and we're cueing the slides. So again, my name is David Reese from the Office of Equity, Diversity and Belonging, and I am really excited to be here and honored to be here actually with my colleague Trinell Bowman, who's the Associate Superintendent of Special Education in PGCPS. Every year in Prince George's County, we have an annual Equity Focus. And throughout the last few years, we focused on different marginalized populations in PGCPS. And this year, we announced that our focus was going to be on students with disabilities. And we have a little bit of context for you on the slide here. In PGCPS, there are 16,131 students with disabilities. And this is a very important note in the middle, and that is about 73.8% of students with disabilities are in the general education setting, 80% or more of their school day, which means they are in classrooms with their non-disabled peers more than 80% of the day. And this is really significant because the state of Maryland has a target of having 71.25% of students with disabilities being engaged in the general education setting for 80% or more of their school day. And in PGCPS, we've exceeded that target, which is a huge plus for us. And that huge plus has come with lots of opportunities for more of our staff members to learn how to meet the needs of the families and the students who are part of this population. In the third column, you notice that the most prevalent disabilities in PGCPS are specific learning disabilities. And sometimes people might hear about dyscalculia or dyslexia, which is about how people are processing numbers and words when they're trying to read and make sense of information, followed by autism, which exists on a spectrum and there are lots of different ways that autism might manifest with different people. And then developmental delays. So those are the very most prevalent disabilities in the Prince George's County school system. And that is as of June 5, 2024. So again, our Office in Equity, Diversity and Belonging has the, a big responsibility to bring awareness to the Prince George's County community, the schools and our community members around the existence, about the lived experiences of a lot of our marginalized populations. So every year, for the past few years, and we kicked it off again this year, we have what's called our Superintendent's Equity Summer Learning Series, which is an opportunity for staff members to volunteer during the summer to come engage in optional learning about an equity-related topic. And this year, we had three sessions and I was really excited to see about 300 to 400 people register and show up to learn about these topics that we were focusing on for special education. And we had school bus drivers, school board members, principals, teachers, paraprofessionals. We had people from business operations who were saying, yes, I want to come learn how to facilitate and lead for equity by helping people learn more about students with disabilities and how to support them better. So with that, we have the series topics there and our first module in June, on June 26, really focused on what we call the sociopolitical context of disability rights, so that we could better understand disability labels and their origins. And one of the big takeaways from the session was that a lot of people learned that disability rights really became a thing in the 1990s. And before the 1990s, the idea that people had rights with disabilities was not something that was commonplace in the United States of America. So this is still a relatively new idea for a lot of people. So that was really a big takeaway for the learning there. For Module 2, which was on July 17, we looked at PGCPS's special education programs. We learned about the different programs that exist in Prince George's County. And we really did, I would say, a really thorough job of allowing students, family members and recent graduates to share their experiences with the PGCPS community. So we got to watch videos, see their testimonies, see their calls to action and figure out how we can do better by them. And then finally, the third session was on August 7, where we really dug into expectations of people with disabilities, the expectations they have for themselves, the expectations that we have for them in our schools. And we looked at spaces where deficit thinking might begin to emerge and we really reflected on our own practices and biases. So that's a synopsis of what happened during the summer learning, which became the foundation for what we were going to experience for the rest of the school year. Again, so for school year 24 to 25, we were going to focus on identifying, honoring and nurturing the unique brilliance of students with disabilities. So this phrase, "unique brilliance," comes from the mission and vision statement for Prince George's County, where we believe that we have the responsibility to enable the unique brilliance of every single student to flourish. And when we say every single student, we mean every single student, however he, she, or they show up, which really does mean our students with disabilities as well. So having this heightened emphasis on this population was really important for us to tackle as a district. You notice that in the middle row, that it says systemic professional development day, September, and it was mandatory for all staff. And so I'm a little bit emotional and a little bit tired today, more tired than I am normally, because I'm coming off of a huge day of professional learning for thousands of people in Prince George's County, which just stopped moments ago. And I've been poring through about 6,000 comments from feedback that we got from staff members, speaking about the depth of their experiences, what their takeaways are and what their commitments are to next steps. So it's been a moving day and we'll be sharing more specifics with you all later. And then coming out of today, we have our school-based and central office next steps. So because we're serious about collecting data and improving based on that data, we asked our school staff, we asked our staff members to commit to putting in writing things that they wanted to get better at individually. And then we're asking school teams and central office teams to think as groups around what their overall learning commitments are and improvement commitments are to support this population better. Okay, so for our Equity Focus, I alluded to this earlier. We were really focusing on centering student, family and staff perspectives. So when we began designing the professional learning for the system, we really wanted to center the student, the family and the staff perspectives. So the first thing we did was we found people who were willing to go on camera and share their authentically lived experiences and truths with a special education and supporting students with disabilities in Prince George's County, and we recorded them. And they gave us their permission to share their voices unedited with staff and with the community so that we could be forced to listen to what they had to say, allow it to resonate with us and then understand how their experiences connect to our practice as leaders in the school system. The last bullet says that lived experiences and perspectives are used to create awareness of strengths, needs and unique brilliance of students with disabilities to inform next steps. So what I'm going to do now is take an opportunity to stop talking, do a screen share and allow you to hear five minutes and 30 seconds. We have over two hours of video from family members who were sharing their experiences with us. And I want you all to hear five minutes and 30 seconds of three families who are going to speak about their experiences with the Prince George's County Public School System and their students. We have Dilcia, who's the mother of Jocelyn, who's a ninth grade student in Prince George's County. Sandy, who is the mother of Christina, a 12th grade student in Prince George's County. And Francis and Louis, who are parents of Grayson, who is currently a first, I'm sorry, now a second grade student in Prince George's County, was the first grade student at the time that we caught their, the time that we captured them. And I am not able to share my screen to show this video at the moment. And now I am. See, if you say it out loud, it'll happen. Colleagues, are you able to see my screen? Awesome. Without further ado, I'll press play. And as you listen, I want you to put yourself in the seat of the parents who are speaking about their child and just allow what they say to enter into your mind, enter into your heart. Try to release defensiveness, try to release the desire to explain what might be happening and listen to what they say because this is their truth about their experience in PGCPS.
Me sent him out because like my family, you know, I've been taking it, maybe I've been watching it. I mean, I was thinking, I don't know what it was. I mean, it was new. I'm like, oh, I'm bad to be a water. You're like, but then, well, it's still in the school, I'm afraid. You know, the new autistic, come out, you're a terrier. I'm sad, but then I did it. Okay, I love it. All that in my party, I tried to help him in all the way that I can.
When I reached out to Gordon, that school, from this country, the principal, the missing one. That was a program change Christina's life. It did. It changed her life. We realized what she needed. What was going to help her? And we saw hope. That's what we saw. And it was so beautiful. Like one time Christina made a, got a 4.0. Never, as she made straight A's. And they left her name off the list at a ceremony. That principal came back to her and she made sure that Christina was recognized at that school. Because it hurt her that this girl worked so hard, got to a 4.0 and then wasn't recognized. So I do say PG County has some awesome people. We just need to get everybody on board and let them know it's not us against them. It's not, everybody just wants to help their child.
We saw, and the IEP people saw at three, that Grayson has strengths. And we, for our other children, have put them in, have done the lottery process. So we had done a lottery process for the Montessori school near us. We did that for Grayson. He made it into the lottery for, for the Montessori school near us. And we were given the choice when finalizing his IEP in that May. You know, we were kind of given the choice. You could send him to an ECC or you, we know he has some skills. You could send him to the Montessori program. The IEP staff was saying, try it. And being scientists as we are, I said to myself, oh, I think, I think we're an experiment. Think our family might be an experiment. They want to see how it's going to work. It did not work. There was a big disconnect between that recommendation, the special education processes and structure and infrastructure and the staff. And there was little oversight at that school to give Grayson the supports that he needed. And the school was not welcoming to him. His autism program where he is, where he was for kindergarten was within the school and there was some inclusion question. There was that question of you're in this school, but are you really included? And, and that is a, that's a, that's an issue with special education all around, right? As a family, you just know that your child in that class was not included and it doesn't, it doesn't feel good and.
The school isn't used to a kid being in an autism program, I don't think, and being in something like CTE. So her schedule got all kind of messed up. So we found out she needed, now she needs to take summer school classes because in order for her to graduate, she needed additional classes and then it was a big thing about next year, trying to put her in evening classes. And then she wouldn't be able to do her sports and all this stuff just because she's not typical. She's in a CTE program and they weren't ready for her to be in a half-day schedule. One of her teachers, the fifth grade teacher, oh, she would put up Christina's work and put a big zero on it in red. And it was so that she displayed kids working the hallway and she would put that zero, big zero. I had struggled in one of the classes because the teacher said, I know she has an IEP, but whatever your daughter gets, the whole class should get it. But the teacher had a problem with kids getting what she felt like an advantage. When, you know, and this is the downfall with autism. Because you don't see the disability, you don't realize, that's like telling somebody they can't have a wheelchair to get around a school. It's just an assistant. Like, everybody should have a wheelchair then. No, because everybody doesn't need the wheelchair.
Okay, so this is a snippet of what our staff experienced today. And there are a number of reasons why I am proud of our school district. One thing is, there's truth that exists that is sometimes hard to confront. And the way to get better is to put the truth in front of us while understanding that we have assets and gifts that we can use to make a difference for our children and make a difference for our families. So I love that we were able to hear directly from the testimony from the families about not knowing what autism was, feeling like you were hit with a bucket of cold water, to hearing how principals are advocating really, really hard for students and making sure that they do right by them, to parents moving between different schools until we finally got it right for them. And I know because I was in the schools today, listening to the conversations, that this really resonated with our staff as some of them saw themselves as the person who, whereas they might not put the big red zero up and put it on the bulletin board like what you heard, but people were able to reflect on some aspects of their practice that they know might not be what's most ideal for children. So it gave us time to kind of think about the things that we do that dishonor the unique brilliance that's in our students so that we can bring it to our awareness. And through awareness, we can actually make change so that we can improve. You notice that there was some selected feedback from the Superintendent's Summer Learning Series that you see there. And that was from the Summer Learning Series. There's so much feedback that we just got today that I haven't been able to kind of comb through and put in the presentation. So that's why we're showing you all what we saw from the Superintendent's Learning Series. But as we said earlier, that our superintendent did a really powerful video where he talked about his own experiences being a child, a person with a disability and how his parents and family is going to help him persevere and become the person that he is today. And there are lots of other pluses around the interview. There was a student who interviewed our superintendent. People liked the facilitation of the sessions and they really liked learning a lot about autism and then different disabilities. And then there were some deltas, because we always ask people, what are some things that made your learning work well and what are the things that we should change in order to make them better? And people felt like there were some technology challenges with facilitation. They wanted more attendees to attend. They felt like all staff should have these experiences. And I said, aha, all staff will have these experiences momentarily and they did that today. And then people wanted to kind of remain on topic during the discussions. As you can imagine, when you're trying to scale learning across 18,000 people or across 400 or 500 people, sometimes it's difficult to kind of keep things on track. So that's something that we really helped our facilitators get better at so that they could help manage the situation. And then last, there were some suggestions around having all students in PGCPS watch one of their student colleagues interviewing the superintendent. We know that we have a lot of data around bullying and harassment and we showed some data today where students with disabilities are self-reporting, having more negative instances with their perceptions of bullying and harassment than their non-disabled peers. So we really want to take this work directly to the students because they are at the center of the work. And once we help make them more aware of the impact of their actions, our hope is that they will be better to each other as a result. And then, and this is some people that I got today, you know, we have 18,000 people in Prince George's County and we did not get to all 18,000 employees today. We always have to make modifications for transportation and making sure that we can get to all the bus lots. And that normally takes us a number of weeks to make sure that we can ensure that we have differentiated the PD so that it connects to every, the professional learning, I'm sorry, so that it connects to everybody's job category so that they see the relevance in it for them. So over the next few weeks, more employees will begin to participate. I would like to ask if we can now go back to the alumnus perspective. We're going to share one more video and we're going to show that video from this screen. It should be embedded in the presentation. And Omar is a recent graduate, not a recent graduate, but a recent enough graduate from Prince George's County. And he has a very powerful story to share about his experiences and where he is now. And we'll see the alumnus perspective on Slide 10 of the presentation.
I think I'm having a little bit of problem showing the video, Dr. David Reese.
Yes, if you give me one moment, I will get my other screen up. I will share the screen momentarily. Can you see my screen? Thumbs up?
Nope, not yet. Yep.
Hi, my name is Omar Akaba. I'm a former student of Prince George's County Public School System. My matriculation started at Woodmore Elementary. Then I transferred over to Whitehall Elementary. Afterwards, I went to Samuel Ogle Middle School. And then after that, I went on to Sullen High School where I was in the T production program. And that's the end of my, you know, matriculation through Prince George's County. But I actually went on to Higher Learning. I went down to Atlanta and I went to Scott Morehouse College where I was there for four years. And I was majored in CTS, so that's cinema, television, and emerging media studies, which is just a fancy way of saying like I have a film degree. But it it focused more so on the writing aspect. Uh, so I graduated as graduated summa cum laude. Which means I graduated with a cumulative or average GPA of three point eighty-five. And I also had honors course for my department for my major. So after that, I applied to Grant School. And I got accepted. So in September, early September, I'll be going to SCAD, which is the Savannah College of Art and Design. I will hopefully leave within one to two years with a master's of arts degree in film. Certainly with a discipline in um directing, but possibly creative writing, we'll see. That was, that was me in my experience in in the school system. But I also like to talk about, you know, how I honor being a disabled student because I am. I have Asperger's, so that's a social disability and emotional disability, but I also had um. A speech slash language disability. It's very hard for me to um talk thereon. And I also have ADHD, which I still suffer with schoolwork. It's hard, you know, like I. It's hard, but it's not hard. For me, I never had a problem learning. I could learn things. Pretty quickly, pretty easily, you know. Uh, that was not necessarily the hard part. What made school hard for me was my ADHD. It was extremely hard to focus, like. I remember when I would get home, I would just spend like hours doing homework. Just because I couldn't focus. And then I I had OCD. So when I was doing reading logs, which I'm sure, you know, some of you remember. Uh, at like divide the book into pages and be like, okay, if I read this, if I read fifty pages, fifty pages, fifty pages, I can get it done. And yes, it's not, you should go about reading a book or go about reading um. But what's undermined the, I I had a lot of people behind me and that supported me to help me, you know, get through that, especially my mom. You know, my mom really helped me get through schooling. I think she was one of the most important factors of me getting through and learning to like, you know, love learning and love reading and things of that nature.
Alright, so that was Omar. We shared a very powerful perspective around what support looked like for him. Um, and he named some things. And I love this video because as he began speaking, he revealed more about himself and his experience. That you might not know about him when you first hear him speak. So when we think about disabilities that we see that are visible. Or invisible or assumed, he helps us really wrap our minds around like what that can look like. This committee meeting is talking about academic achievement. And through what each of the parents said and what you heard from the student, academic achievement has been the focus. So this works in a lot of different ways. One, we have to have a system that's committed to focusing on the academic. Expectations for all students, especially those with disabilities. And we have a lot of really strong staff. I've gotten to meet a lot of them in the Department of Special Education who really know what they're doing. And we have some really committed educators who are working. And need professional learning to figure out how best to make sure they're working with all the students who are now in their classroom. Who a decade or two ago weren't in classrooms to the extent that they were. So this is really a seismic shift in a lot of ways where educators. Are seeing themselves as being responsible for educating all students because all students can achieve. We have too many CSI schools or too many schools. And ours in our system that have the state designation that needs improvement because of their special education status. I think there's one more slide that I'm going to speak to quickly and I'm going to turn it over to Trinell Bowman, who's going to give us a lot more information before we move over to your the questions and answers. And I think my next slide was one where I was going to give you all some more context around what happened today with the professional learning. But as opposed to speaking a lot about what the feedback said. I want you all, and we should probably be on the next slide, I want you all who are watching right now, and I want our board members who are here to think about. How have you been impacted? By what you just saw? That came from the professional learning that staff experienced today. We asked people for their pluses, their questions and wonderings. And again, there was a commitment to next steps that I'll be following up on with you all throughout the year. And with that, I would like to turn it over to. My colleague, Trinell Bowman.
Thank you so much, David. Um, so what I'll be sharing with you now is just some follow-up. Activities um that again supports the equity lens on special education. The great thing, we just released our strategic plan for twenty-four to twenty-seven. And part of that strategic plan, there is an action step. That really aligns our equity focus uh for students with disabilities, which is to provide training and resources around inclusive practice. So you heard parents talk about their children not feeling um included or not feeling like they belong there. And so we really want to give. Um, tips and strategies to our staff and think about as we think about inclusive practices. What are you doing as a school, as a teacher, um in the cafeteria, our bus drivers to really make students feel included? And so we are really going to focus on targeted groups from our school-based administrators, general education teachers, creative arts. Physical education teachers, specialty program, teachers that include CTE teachers, language immersion, et cetera. But this is something that we will be monitoring as part of our strategic plan. The other thing, I think when we were before you in April of this past school year when we did the special ed work session. Um, one of our board members um had suggested and recommended. That we look at doing um pa- family surveys or parent surveys through the individualized education program meeting process. So Dr. White and I. Made a commitment that night, that evening at the April twenty twenty-four work session to really look into that and um discuss that with our team. And so we're happy to report that we will be releasing um parent engagement surveys uh this month. Uh, a memorandum has been um created and developed and will be going to principals around the expectations that. When IEP meetings are being held throughout the school year, that parents have an opportunity to complete uh engagement survey. This is really to help us gather data of where things are working great and where we need to improve. Um, the data will be an anonymous survey that parents will complete, but we will ask parents to indicate their child's grade level and the school. The school is going to be very important so that principals and their leadership team get the data back and returned so they can be able to look at it. Um, and then we, as a district um office, will be able to look at it and share that data. So that will be ongoing and we'll have data that we'll be able to share with you um when we come back together. The other thing that we'll be doing um and partnering with our Office of Equity, Diversity, and Belonging. Is each week, we're so excited, we're going to be doing Equity in a Minute. This was very similar to what we did for our Black and Brown Boys last year through the Equity Series, but each week. We have made a commitment to share Equity in a Minute as it relates to students with disabilities. It could be providing a specific data point around special education, a particular fact. And then guiding questions or thinkabouts that our teams in schools can begin to think about as they think about students with disabilities, the advocacy. Of that. And then we all have equity leads at each of our schools who would then be doing some follow-up around the Equity Minutes, but we believe this is a very. Important piece to continue the conversation in our schools, our thinkabouts and guiding questions to really inform. The work that we'll be doing around students with disabilities this year. The other thing you heard David talk about is really those next steps around our school-based teams and our central office. Offices really thinking about the systemic professional learning that happened today and the areas that they really want uh to focus on. Um, and so we'll be supporting through, again, throughout the year. Um, three particular focuses that we've asked schools to focus on. We are here about that in just a moment, but we really want to be um supportive. Um, provide them with the necessary resources. So one of the things that we did do today is we provided with them with some additional learning. We've we shared a movie with um idea with them. We shared resources. So the Department of Special Ed did prepare. A variety of resources around thinking about inclusive tips, thinking about specially designed instruction, understanding disabilities. And a variety of other resources so that teams would have some strategies right at their tips as they left the professional learning today. Um, again, to be able to do that deeper work within their school teams. Um, the other thing we wanted to share with you is and on August fifteenth, we had a welcome back to special education town hall meetings with our families. So I just wanted to share a little bit of insight with you based on uh those town hall meetings. I did provide you with the link. Again, we did share with our families the equity focus. Um, so David and I. Um, did join in and talk about the equity focus just to give parents an understanding of what was happening this year. They did get to see. Some snippet of videos as well as other um updates that we're sharing around special education. I have provided you with the link if you'd like to take a look at the actual welcome back to special ed town hall. It is available for your review. This is some data um from the Welcome Back to School Special Ed Town Hall. We had four hundred and fourteen families register for the town hall. Two hundred and thirty-eight families attended. Uh, we did have interpreters for Spanish. As well as, I believe, French, American Sign Language. We also um had two hundred and thirty-four questions that we received. So part of the registration process. Was for families to indicate specific questions they had or specific topics they wanted to learn more about. Of those two hundred and thirty-four questions, there were very specific cases that required follow-up. Either from a member of my team or from the school principal where parents had expressed concerns maybe about a particular case. Or things that were happening with their individual child. So there were about fifty-four of those particular questions that we knew that we needed to do a. Immediate touch point for those families. Um, and those um calls and conversations are still happening. There were nineteen questions that we were able to get to as part of the town hall. And one thing that we'll be doing with the questions that we did receive, we will be re- releasing a frequently asked questions. Uh, for families so that they can get those particular answers um addressed if they were not addressed at the town hall. So that is a follow-up that we will be doing. Um, and releasing those questions and answers. These were the top ten questions. So when we looked at those two hundred and thirty-four questions. And when we also looked at topics that families wanted to learn more about, these were the top ten. Um, you know that David shared with you earlier that autism is one of our top prevailing uh disabilities in Prince George's County. It is our second highest at twenty-one percent of all students with disabilities in Prince George's County um have autism. And so that wasn't surprising to us that that was a top ten question category or topic. And then you see the other ones that are listed here. So we'll be taking these particular topics throughout the year. As we work with our Special Education Citizens Advisory uh Committee through future town halls as well as future uh meetings with them. Um, we did do an exit town hall evaluation. So the first question related to the session was relevant to my needs. Um, and so you see, we had about eighteen families complete the survey. And most of them agreed uh with that statement, either strongly agreed or um agreed. And then the presenters were knowledgeable and well-prepared panelists. So we had um folks from special education. We also had. Uh, staff from our Department of Student Services who were part of the panelists to answer the questions that families had. And they also um relatively agreed with strongly agreed, mostly strongly agreed or agreed that those panelists were knowledgeable um for PGCPS. Um, these were some of the suggestions that we got back uh from families as they completed the survey. They wanted more inter- a more interactive survey. Um, they also wanted to recommend that we focus on specific topics and perhaps. Um, the topics may not relate to every family member that's attending so that we could be very specific to what their needs are. And be able to have more of an interactive breakout session for those families um who may have specific focuses. Because all topics are would not be relevant to all families. Um, families felt that this was a great um approach. A verse, a good step forward to really be able to communicate from families, hear from the families. Um, they also wanted us to um ensure that we're consulting with our families as we put together future town hall meetings. And you're here. In just a moment, how we're going to be doing that to make sure that we have the family's perspective and voice in our upcoming planning. And then continue to provide ta- topics that were relevant to special education or families um as they navigate the special ed process. And so one of the things that we are doing this year is we are partnering with our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee to offer um an additional. Um, that was our kickoff town hall for the school year, but we will be having four subsequent town hall meetings uh throughout the school year. And on the next slide, it just gives you our CCAC, Special Education Citizens Advisory focuses for each of those months. Um, again, we did commit to having four uh additional town hall meetings with CCAC. Uh, David Reese and I throughout the summer have been meeting with our Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Who are parents and families of PGCPS students um to really talk about what do we want the town hall to focus on? What are those? Topics. And so the kickoff Welcome Back to School Town Hall really set the stage for understanding the topics and the questions that families. Had. And so we'll be navigating through that planning um with our CCAC board and David Reese will be part of that planning. Along with me and our other parents that are part of our CCAC board. Um, this slide again just gives you um overwhelmingly, our families wanted to stay with a virtual option. Um, and not have our town halls face to face. So we're honoring that. Um, with our CCAC meetings, they're traditionally uh by Zoom. And so you can see here that we will have four subsequent town hall meetings on October twenty-second. January twenty-eighth, March twenty-fifth, and May twenty-seventh. And then we also um will have different topics that will be throughout the year, um school year. So September twenty-fourth, we're really talking about. How do you resolve concerns that you may have with your child as you're navigating the special ed process? November nineteenth, we're going to do a deeper dive around understanding the special ed programs. Such as twice exceptional or autism program and really understanding the IEP process. February twenty-fifth, um another big topic that came out of the town hall was just about transition and what resources are available. Not only as we think about children who are transitioning from our early childhood centers to elementary and then to middle and high. But what happens after the bus stops coming? What happens when our students are looking at higher ed opportunities? Or training programs or competitive work? And so really just giving families those resources as they navigate those various transitions. And then in October, I mean, I'm sorry, April, we'll focus on autism, that is Autism Awareness Month, as well as focusing on our mental health awareness. Again, you've heard a lot today about our professional learning. And as we think about our equity fogey for our schools and districts. To identify, honor, and nurture the unique brilliance of our students with disabilities. Our Office of Equity, Diversity, and Special Ed have asked schools to really be intentional. You heard Dr. White talk about that earlier. Um, and there's three areas of intentionality that we really want to focus on. First, we have heard our families loud and clear around family positive fostering those relationships, right? We'll have our parent survey data. That would really be able to see, for us to be able to see our da- our data both at the district level and at specific schools and clusters of schools. So we really want schools to be intentional about building those positive. Uh, relationships with their families and cultivating a climate that allows parents to be heard, to be seen. And to be a part of the team. And so we really want our families to be welcomed in our schools and to really be part of the IEP process with our school teams. The other piece we really want to focus on um and being intentional about with our schools. Is developing, implementing, and monitoring specially designed instruction. So really thinking about students and their accommodations. Are we using those accommodations? You heard David talk about the CSI and ATSI schools. We know that providing students with their accommodations. Helps to support academic achievement, right? Without those accommodations, students may not do as well. And so it's very important that students are getting those accommodations um on a daily basis. We have systems and structures in place to really monitor how students are receiving their accommodations that we have trained our principals and school leaders on as well as teachers. The other piece is intervention. So we know that for some students, there are some gaps as it relates to their reading performance and mathematics. Again, another way as we continue to implement interventions, that helps to narrow that achievement gap. And have her and have us have better results on our state assessments. Um, so we really want to make sure that we're really thinking about specially designed instruction. The I in IEP is about individualized. Needs of students. And so we really want to make sure that we're focusing on that. And then the other piece for our school and district, so we believe that even our districts. Um, have a partnership in this is really promoting inclusive practices for students with disabilities. So what are those things that we can even do at the district office level? So what are those things that we can even do at the district office level to ensure that we're being inclusive for students with disabilities? So I can share a partnership that we have with the Food and Service um Office where they're actually training our students, right, to be food service, to be able to work in the cafeteria. And so that's a partnership as an example of an inclusive practice that a district office is doing. Um, as we think about our schools, if you think about your different um extracurricular clubs, um, are you, are you intentionally focusing on making sure that students with disabilities are part of those clubs, are part of those assemblies that you're having? And so those are different things that we're doing to really think about promoting um inclusive practices. So these are the three areas that we'll be sharing data with you on and coming back um in January to show you where we are um as it relates to these three areas. And now we're ready for questions and answers.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, I will now open the floor for discussion. As a reminder, we have uh two rounds. Um, we're going to limit it to two and a half minutes each round. So I open up the floor. Any questions?
I was actually pausing because I was waiting for the student to go first. But I I just wanted to start by thanking um Dr. White, Dr. Reese, and Mr. Nell Bowman for this, you know, really um informative. I I don't want to say presentation, but just giving us information of what is happening. Dr. White, um, I do know, and I echo your sen- sentiments when you say this work didn't start here because having been on the, a committee for two years, I have watched you and your team really work on the effort of equity and ensuring that students with disabilities that you're addressing um and enhancing the practices that are around the school system. So I just want to say thank you. The uh, you know, another example would be when they gave, when um, there was a um, parents um, just talking about, you know, being inclusive. And we see it echoed loud and clear over here. We're going to give professional learning across the district on inclusive practices. And then looking at the culture and fostering positive relationships to enhance what is already happening. Um, I'm excited about the uh survey that is going to go out. And so my question was around the survey. Um, is it going to go to the, through the schools or um, how is it going to go out to? And I know with surveys, we we can, we try to get as many uh in terms of response rate. Um, just kind of getting a sense of what are, what are some of the avenues that you use to get it out? So you could get as much of a response rate as possible.
So one of the first things we did, we thought that having a QR, our QRL code would be easy for families because all they can do is take their phone, scan it, and be able to comple- complete the survey. So we'll have, we are doing um printouts for schools to have the QRL code code at their school. Where they actually on, if they're on a Zoom or in person, they can hold that up for families. So that would be part of the meeting as they do the closeout of the meeting, reminding families to complete the survey. We'll also have it on our website. We also will be sharing it with our communications team so it can go out in our family um parent engagement newsletters. And then we will also, of course, be sharing it with our school-based administrators and other team members at the school. All special educators will have it. Um, our family support center also will be sharing that in their newsletter um so that we can make sure that it gets out through um to all of our different networks as well as our social media outlets.
Yeah, and I think the intent, the intent behind that survey isn't to, I have a random question. I mean, people can drop things in, but it's about your experience. So one of the things that you've heard loud and clear is this, uh, what's our culture in our schools, right? So even when the parents have come to the board meetings, you really haven't heard them talk about the academic component, but they're learning what they're missing. It's how I was dealt with, how I was engaged with, how I felt, how my voice was heard. And so this is about tracking data to see, you know, then when we, because behind the scenes, we'll be able to look. So you heard her say sharing with administrators. So are we seeing the same patterns in the same places? Or is that just like a one-off, right? Where do we need to take now the PD of our team to support schools in areas that we're identifying trends? So, you know, again, uh, parents came, we heard that, and we put that in place immediately. Parents talked about town halls. We heard that. We did that before school started. Um, the family support center, Trinell and I are really looking at, how do we use the parent support, that family support center to be that bridge? Because what we're identifying is we're creating up here, but I don't run schools, right? And so when we get those, if you think about it, all of those things are things that happen at schools, but then Trinell gets all those things. And so how do we help to build the capacity and to build the culture so that when parents walk into a space, it's warm inviting and their voices are heard at the table?
Thank you. Would, would that be something that you would want us as board members to place in our newsletters at the appropriate time? Could we help with that or um sharing the information when you're ready for it? Or would you rather that went through the school so that you can ensure you're collecting the data from students with?
I think it's about the parent's experience in that moment. So I go to an IEP meeting at the, as a part of that meeting, they will say, here is a survey that you can take about your experience today. Right? So we can pinpoint to the, our meetings. And you know, that way we can get better with our meetings. We can get better with how we're communicating. We can get better with, you know, what are we providing as documents? We think it makes sense, but does it make sense to the parent that just sat and engaged? You know, maybe we can follow a trend to find out like, oh, we have a lot of places where the, the um regular educator, the gen- general educator is not showing up to meetings. Like, it's going to allow us to see trends in the moment. My thinking is that when you just have a link out there and people just had a one-off that had nothing to do with that IEP experience, what we put in IEP, are they getting services, how they're followed through, that it could then have some other ways. But Trinell's team also has the family support center that we can definitely give you a link to. So as parents have concerns about anything, we want them to know that there's this other avenue that they can go to and that parent support center is there um as a resource to assist them with navigating concerns at their schools.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And that makes sense why it would happen right at the, at the meeting. Okay, so you can get it real fast.
I know we're at time, but I do want to say that there, the, the mom who you heard speak about not knowing what autism was, I was able to watch. So what you all did not see was we had two examples of IEP meetings. One was an exemplar IEP meeting and one was something that we hope we don't see happen. And that meeting really resonated with the staff as they could see archetypes of behaviors that maybe we've seen before that were illuminated for us to make us say that that's not who we are. So imagine someone coming to a school building who doesn't know what autism is, and this is my child, this has been my baby. One of our staff members said, I now I'm thinking differently about how I interact with and regard the person who shows up. As opposed to just talking about autism, I can't assume that the parent who shows up even has a mental model for what this is. And that was a huge aha.
Thank you for that. Board member Jamal Janga, do you have um any questions?
Um, I do not right now, but I do want to um thank you all for this presentation. It's thorough and it's well thought of. If I do have any questions, I'll make sure to contact um either Dr. White or Mr. Reese or even Ms. Bowman.
Thank you. I'm gonna pass to you the chair for a moment so I could ask my questions to you um to the group. Um, first of all, thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. Uh, as a clinical social worker and for seeing and for our parents to feel like the conversations that were being shared by the parents were heartfelt. And the video of our student, of our alum being successful is what we should all strive to share, right? Because I think our students with disabilities is having obstacles, but in reality, there's a lot of opportunities that can make them flourish. I love what we're doing. Um, I have questions in terms of um how we're going to move forward with um the terms of how is that then going to be shared to the board? Um, and then the other question is that I have is um what are some of the gaps? What are some of the needs that um you need our board support? How can we support you in this work?
So one of the things, David, um, I think she's more referring to your survey because we couldn't pull together all of those things and theme it. So if you want to talk about that and then um, either one of you can answer the questions and I'll jump in afterwards.
So one thing about like being system-wise, which is a publication that, you know, we're trying to use more in our school district is we, we want to be very intentional around what data we're collecting and why we're collecting it and then make a plan to do something with it. So we've already scheduled the planning meeting where we're going to synthesize all of the data points that I was kind of combing through today because I just couldn't wait to get my hands on them. So we have a team from Trinell's department and my office of about ten or twelve people who are working together to comb through the data, theme it, and make sure that we make all the data transparent back to the entire system so that everybody can see what people were saying, what the general trends are, what people are committing to doing so that we can just all be transparent and then figure out how those next steps fit into the buckets that we showed you on the one slide that talked about what schools are going to do with the IEP meetings, inclusive practices, and then specially-designed instruction. Um, so that will be public for everyone and Trinella and I can bring that back to these meetings to share with.
David, I would also think that you'd probably be able to look at uh different offices, probably see trends. So like, what, what did transportation say? How did that impact budget? How did, you know, so you can kind of see different themes, which they probably sh- would look different in what uh we all think about.
Thank you for that. And what do you need from us?
I think just to know that um one, communication out. Um, you know, I'm good about bringing things to you all when I know I need to get it out. So uh what I can do with Trinell is maybe Trinell and David, we can work on a little toolkit, um communications toolkit, board toolkit of, of things that would just be good, like, oh, you have a concern? Family Support Center, let me give you that number. Just some, like some quick things that you all had as things are coming to you. Um, I think what you could do to help us is to get the word out about our CCAC meetings for any special education parents in your communities that you serve that here is every single month, we have a form that they can come and hear the topics, right? So they can be intentional about the ones that they want to join or join all of them. Um, especially the four town halls because they'll be able to, you know, um, put in their questions and get answers. I think you heard Trinell mention our FAQ, so I think we can provide you with the FAQs. So that's another thing that you can get out um to your constituents and to those in your communities and districts because I think that will be helpful and just kind of spread the word that you see us operating, listening, and making adjustments.
Thank you, we can do that. Was the second round for uh Dr. Miller, if you should choose to um take?
Uh, yeah, because when Dr. White was talking about sharing the information about the town halls and all the meetings that are coming up, it occurred to me once coming up in September, is there a link or something, and you probably already sent it to us, um, that you can send us particularly because you're starting with a really, really key topic. I think it's the one on how to resolve concerns. And I want to make sure that I really push that out so that parents are aware. Because sometimes it's just about, I didn't know what to do, you know? And so I want to make sure that um I can send this out as many times as possible to get to our communities so that they can attend um the meeting. So if there's a link for them to register or whatever, um, if we can get it, that would be great.
Yes, I can send that to the board office.
Thank you. And then the last piece that I was very interested in talking about was um that um post-secondary planning, the transition planning that we um provide our students. How are we getting that, the word out? How many transition um workers do we have that are helping? Our students create those?
So one of the things that we do is all students at the age of fourteen in our district in the state of Maryland have to have what we call a transition plan that talks about um agency linkages with Prince George's County or the state if the student needs it. All students have to have a career in- interest inventory completed or some type of assessment where it really talks and speaks to, you know, when, what do they see themselves doing when they leave Prince George's County Public Schools? When they exit out. And that's a plan that we monitor every single uh school year as part of the annual review. We're fortunate in Maryland because we start early legally. Um, in the federal legislation, it's sixteen. So we start at fourteen. So most of our students leaving their middle school experience have a secondary transition plan. Each school has what we call a transitioning youth coordinator that really works with students. Some students are doing work-based opportunities. Some students, we're encouraging, they go through the CTE pathways and other, but that's data that we can definitely bring back if that's something you're interested in in terms of as we think about um our students with disabilities across the system. What are their secondary transitioning? Uh, what is their interest? So we definitely can collect that data through our Maryland Online in terms of their interest areas. And then where are they actually provide, where are they actually sitting in our school system on those um secondary transition interests? So are they in CTE? Are they in dual enrollment? What are those things looking like for them? So that's data that we can definitely um provide to you.
And you know, as a part of Blueprint, we have that, you know, to make sure that we're working across all platforms to see where, th- them and actually multilingual learners, where are they? Where do they show up? Where is there a gap? Um, we also realize that in areas where we need support, we have partners that we contract with to provide services for some of our students when they leave us to help transition to the world of work because we make that a part of their programming as well, especially in some of our programs.
Thank you for that.
I want to add one more piece from a very technical um space, and this is because I, I can't get the today's learning out of my head. Um, but when we were sharing one of the videos where you heard the mom that you heard, I'm not sure if you spoke about CTE and scheduling, career and technical education. There were people from CTE in the academics meeting today and to see the chat happen and to see there and to have conversation with them afterwards where they realized we have a real role to play in working with schools around scheduling so that this doesn't happen. And again, we're reflecting on our own practices as a system and there's some things that we can clean up to make things a lot more smooth so that children have access to these pathways. So that was really another powerful moment.
And I was in that session. I had four hundred and twenty-four staff members in my session. And the one thing that I wrote down is how flexible are we with scheduling to allow our special education students to get their schedules but also have access to other? That was the, that was the one point that I wrote down as a aha. Like, so I'm, I'm always listening for like, what's the thing? Like, that we can do to, I thought that was a powerful point too.
Thank you so much. This has been amazing. Thank you for all the work that you're putting into our students, our scholars, our families and helping us understand the bigger picture, right, that and how it impacts academic achievement for all. Uh, and with that, um, I want to move on to our four point O, which is our follow-up and next steps.
Can we, before we do that, I do want to show one last, like, the, think, one of the most powerful things that we showed our SaaS staff today was this video here. Um, because I think it brings home why we do what we do. So I just wanted, before we go to your next point, if we could just show this and then you can pick up as soon as it ends.
Absolutely. Uh, this was the culminating video and it's about two minutes. It's Dear Teacher. We, this, these are not our students in PGCPs, but they are students with disabilities um in our nation.
Dear teacher, I know it doesn't always seem like it, but I really do want to listen and learn.
It's just my brain is kind of different.
So this is what I'd like you to know about me.
I have to move or I really can't pay attention.
Even though I'm not looking at you, I can still listen to what you're saying.
If you tell me, sit up straight. Now I have to use all of my brain to do just that.
It makes me feel sad when you tell me to try harder, even though I've already tried as hard as I can.
I actually listen better when I'm rocking in my chair.
When you give me a bunch of directions, I start to think I will never remember all of this.
Sometimes my mom or dad ends up doing all of my homework.
So here's how you could maybe help. Let me get up and move while I'm learning.
Let me look wherever I want when you talk to me.
Let me rock or slouch in my chair.
No matter what, please don't take away my recess.
Give me hope, I could do all by myself. Nature change very short.
Just ask me, what does your brain need right?
Just ask me, what does your brain need right now?
And one more thing, my brain might be different than yours, but it's still amazing.
Sincerely, your student.
Your student.
Your student.
Your student.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Now I'm in tears. I am so sorry. That was beautiful because we all need to hear that. Thank you for that. Dr. Miller?
No, I would be remiss if I didn't say this after this video. So to Dr. White and Dr. Bowman, what you may not know is when my youngest son was in the third grade, we didn't know what was going on. Eventually, after numerous meetings, he was placed on an I E P and as a general ed educator, I panicked because my oldest son was on a ninety-ninth percentile. Every test he took, he was accepted to Roosevelt Academy of Health Sciences. Just so I was like, oh my God, what's going to happen to my youngest son? But our school system, after numerous tries and numerous meetings, and we would go to one I E P meeting after another and we would try this. What is it called? Accommodation. And sometimes it wouldn't work and then we would try that and sometimes it wouldn't work. And then we would try this. And by the time he got to the eighth grade, he was placed in the advanced algebra class. By the time he got to high school, he was taking A P courses. And I just want to show you a success story. He is now studying chemical engineering. And I never would have thought that he would have done that because he knows how to advocate for themselves. He knows when he needs to get out of the room and run. He knows when he needs to take a break. So even though some nights it would take him hours to study, he knew when he needed to take a break and come back. And that was as, not as a result of what we knew as parents. That was as a result of what the academic team would advise us to do when we came home with you. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you for this. That was a powerful story. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for sharing, most definitely. My heart is full. I just think that the most powerful thing is they are our students. They're all our students. And we need and must do everything we can to be there for them and to allow them to shine. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. And now we'll move on to follow up and next steps. Four point one in the agenda items states that follow ups. Fifteen, twenty twenty-four academic follow-ups from tonight's meetings will be hosted in Boudax as well. I want to thank the public, my colleagues, PG CPS administration staff and board office staff for joining us tonight. And truly PG CPS proud tonight about the work that we're doing. Thank you so much. There being no further business, the time is now six forty-five and the September sixteen, twenty twenty-four Academic Achievement Committee meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and have a great evening.